It's 5:30. It's time to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, first on the agenda, the adoption of the agenda. Have you both had a chance to look at the agenda? Do you have any modifications?
I have. I have no modifications.
I've reviewed the agenda and have no additions either.
So I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Item number two, appointments, Park Board. There is one unexpired term due to a resignation. The applications will remain open until December 1st of 2021. So those of you that are interested in applying, you still have time to get that application in, and I encourage you to do so if you're interested. Or if this is the first time bringing yourself forward to serve on a board, this would be a great opportunity for you to gain some valuable experience. So it's open until December 1st, 2021.
I might note that we already have the three maximum that live outside the city on that board, so this appointment must be inside the city limits.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. Item number three, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent, to approve and accept the consent agenda? Excuse me.
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Item four, public hearings. Item number eight, public hearing for considering condemnation of 801 East Birch Street as dangerous and unsafe. David?
Mayor, this house was involved in a structure fire, and it had then switched hands and is now under new ownership. It is a rental. It has completed repairs inside, and it has passed HQS inspection by the code enforcement officer, Aaron Musgrove. If you remember right, when this happened, there was a fence around it, there were car parts, cars, a lot of different trash and different things like that, but it has passed the HQS. I will note that, you know, HQS doesn't always say the outsides have to be painted and all that, but all of the living standards inside are met, windows work, electrical, plumbing, everything is to standard to allow this to come off a condemnation.
All right. Great. Great. I'm glad they moved forward on that. And just the fact that it was cleaned up, it was pretty much an eyesore and had been for a good length of time.
Yes.
So hopefully she'll be able to get stable renters in there.
It is already rented.
Okay, good. Good. Keep the property up and maybe somewhere down the road in the spring she'll be looking at maybe doing some cosmetic work on the outside of the property.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Dave?
I have none.
I have none.
Then I entertain a motion on this. Excuse me.
I move to adopt a resolution rescinding a previous resolution which set a date, a hearing date to consider condemnation of 801 East Birch Street.
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving along. Item five, items for commission action. Item A, consider proclaiming the week of November 15th through November 21st, 2021 as National Apprentice Week.
That, this was requested by Kansas Works, and I don't know if they have a representative here or not. Doesn't look like it, but they have requested that this be proclaimed.
This is basically encouraging people to follow a different path as far as in apprenticeship, to learn on job skills to where they can secure better paying jobs.
Yes, this is what they sent us. They sent us the language for that.
Okay. It's a good program. I know where I was formerly working at, we were always hiring apprentices to learn the trade of being a lineman or substation work or whatever, to get them trained properly so we would have people coming up to fill the vacancies as these occurred. So this is a good chance for those that are interested in that type of work. They can learn a trade and really make some good money, so that's good. So with that, I need a motion on this.
I move to proclaim November 15th through 21st, 2021 as National Apprenticeship Week.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Item B, this is something that was tabled from the last meeting. It is considered a request from Joshua Anderson to exceed the sewer cost share maximum for property located at 415 West Minister.
Mayor, from our last meeting, you know, you guys have, I think, done your own little research. We've done some. I did speak to Mr. Anderson on, was it Monday, Kelly, I believe? He feels he has explained his position well enough, therefore he didn't feel it would do any good for him to come here tonight. He asked me just to contact him tomorrow or Friday with whatever you guys decide what options are, but he had nothing further to add to the discussion from the previous meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you, David. Commissioners, what's your take on this? We have a recommendation here that's presented to us by the city staff.
We don't have a formal resolution or a modification of our grant application to allow or to set a standard to add it to the taxes, the property taxes. So I don't feel comfortable proceeding with that, although I support that revision to our grant program to allow that option from the discussion last week. Mr. Anderson, or last commission meeting, Mr. Anderson felt like he couldn't sign it, so to proceed with an approval to do that and not having really the format laid out in writing at this time, I would just honor the grant that was given to him. And I noticed that in the information that what he received from his plumber was just an estimate. So at this time for us to approve an amount, we're not sure if what we would approve would even be sufficient, or is it more than enough? I think that's something we need to consider in how we word that portion to our grant program. And again, I feel to just go ahead and award the money without having some program like was presented by the city manager adding it to the property tax assessment, that we can't, we can't set a standard that this will be the norm. I think it's hard to be fair with an approach of individually reviewing each request and making a decision on that. We need to have a format and a plan for, that's consistent with every applicant. And back to what was presented by the city manager, that is consistent with every applicant. So, you know, my opinion is the grant was awarded for $4,000, and staff needs to go ahead and make recommendations to modify the grant program in the manner to allow assessment if the property owner so decides. And with that, we do not take any further action.
Based on the way the motion is written here, the proposed motion is written here, it suggests that a process is in place for the assessment. Am I incorrect in assuming that there is a process in place for assessing this to property taxes for the next 10 years at an interest rate of 4%? Is there a process in place for that?
Well, there's a sewer agreement, or cost share agreement that the city attorney prepared to allow that. The actual sewer cost share program just states that the commission may consider an amount above the maximum, and it doesn't state how that would be paid.
So if the cost comes in above this particular, I guess the language here allows for the cost to be at or above the $4,000 grant maximum, and whatever that value over the grant maximum is would be then the portion that would be assessed and repaid?
Yes.
So that, we're not really tied to this estimate in any way per this motion, correct? Are we tied to the estimate?
No.
No. My heart goes out to the homeowner in this way, and that is that until this is fully funded, nothing can really be done because it won't be completed. So I don't know what fully funded means, but I think giving the opportunity to have it fully funded with no out-of-pocket expenses instantaneously, but be prorated over this period of time seems like a very lenient way to approach this and does give people who are in a financial hardship of this nature the opportunity at least to agree with the loan amount. I don't know what this loan amount would be because we don't know what the final cost would be, but offering this homeowner this option seems like a rational approach, and it's my understanding that you intend to formalize this approach for future applicants in the city.
Yes, that would be our intention if the commission wished to approve that when we bring it back.
Your intention is to bring it to the city commission to formalize this approach? And the sewer is another aging infrastructure. Many of the homes are approaching 100 years in age, and so are their sewer systems and other infrastructure improvements. So unless you push back in such a way that you would see, well, because you've structured this motion in the way that you have, I'm assuming that you are ready to deploy it upon our, if it were to pass this evening?
Yes, if the property owners are willing to sign the agreement.
So it's still dependent upon the property owners accepting it?
Yes, it's an agreement between the city and the property owner. And Jeff, are there any concerns you're aware of? Because it doesn't state specifically in the policy how the additional would be paid if they exceeded the maximum?
This policy just says up to 4,000, and then it says this amount can be exceeded with approval of the city commission. I think the concern from staff was there's a lot of sewer work coming up in the near future, and we could be looking at multiple applicants that might want to exceed this stated maximum, and the city would, can't just fund it all 100%, so the city was looking at a way to recoup anything in excess of 4,000, but at the same time make it affordable, spread it out over 10 years. There's no state law ordinance right now that says that we can do that, so we would have to have the consent of the landowner to do it. So that's why that document was drawn.
And I think that's where we should approve the document before we start administering an attempt at a project like that. The wording, it's just bad business to come up with an agreement that we're going to do something with nothing in writing. You just don't, you don't do that in the business world, whether it, you know, I think we can all agree it's a great idea, but the policy, which policies are part of the commission's responsibility, action should be taken to adopt that policy prior to allowing an individual to participate in it. And, you know, we do have, if it's a rush, we've got a commission meeting next week that that could be added to the agenda, a special meeting. So, you know, the thing is, we've got to go in an order that we have policies adopted and in place before we start allowing them to be administered.
That is not, pardon me. Were you done?
Yeah.
Okay. That documentation that Commissioner Koflish is asking for is not in this packet. Is that correct? It's not in the packet for today's meeting?
I believe he's talking about the sewer cost share program, right?
No, I'm talking about the loan, I'm talking about the loan document.
Oh, yeah. I sent out a second packet probably 15 minutes after the first one that included that sewer cost share agreement.
Okay.
For tonight's meeting?
Yes.
I didn't get a second packet.
Okay, it was sent out Friday.
I got one packet Friday.
You know, I think this is a document which was obviously going to bring up that you were referring to?
Yes.
Where it says on item number two, additional costs about citizen to repay the above stated by allowing the city to assess additional costs against citizens' property over 10 years bearing interest at 4% annual.
Yes.
So this is the document that we need to look at and prove.
That's the document we were referring to. I apologize. I realized after I sent the first packet out on Friday that that wasn't in there, so I re-sent it out probably about 15 minutes later.
Hmm.
Okay. Do you have this document?
And I actually put a note that I'd missed it and put the page number that it was located on.
I have reopened the Agenda Center and gone to the HTML view and opened the attachment for this line item.
Was this, was this document available at the last meeting? Because I didn't, I didn't print anything off, and it was in my, in my folder from the last meeting.
Did we? I can't remember if we did or not.
I didn't print it off, and I looked for it.
I think I emailed it to you before the meeting because we got it after the packets went out.
Okay.
And it's the same agreement.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
Well, we didn't, it's not noted as we were going to take action on that, so that makes it a little harder to follow through. I had, I only got one, I only got one packet. So, you know, if, if this is what we're going to do, we got a meeting the 17th, then let's act on, you know, it's just again, it's business to be handed, a policy at a commission meeting and expect to act on it without review.
Okay.
Again, I thought I sent it out on Friday, so I didn't realize you didn't have it.
Electronics. No, I didn't realize I didn't either have it because I didn't, I just got one packet, so.
I had trouble locating it as well until just a moment ago, so it's not unique to Commissioner Koflish.
The wonder of electronics.
I would like, I would like time to review that myself, so if we could.
Table this again.
Table it until our next meeting.
Sure.
Next week, that would be appropriate.
So we'll need a motion to move it to the agenda for next week?
Yeah, I would just suggest you just table it.
Okay.
Put it on the next one.
Okay. We will table item B for now, and it will be on the agenda for our next meeting, which is the 17th?
The 18th.
18th of November, okay.
I second the motion.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Item C, consider authorizing a request for proposals for storm water infrastructure investigation at Central Park. John, how are you this evening?
Doing wonderful. How are you doing tonight?
Good.
In doing the engineering work for the new Central Park complex, one of the things that was found in field investigation is there are several areas where the existing storm sewer is apparently visible at the surface level. The storm sewer is very old. Apparently in some cases consists of a concrete floor and a concrete top with brick sides. So it's, and it's actually, you know, person-sized. A person can walk through in many areas. So it's a very significant structure, and we have, to my knowledge, very little documentation on it. So in order to do this project, working through Central Park, to come across and find our storm sewer in the middle of construction would be a very, very, very difficult thing and would lead towards a tremendous amount of cost. So our consultant brought forward the idea that let's go through, investigate and map our storm sewer as well as know what our condition is so that we understand where it is, what elevation it's at, and so that, because it might be some simple design tweaks, can design everything around the existing storm sewer and we're fine. And we'll also have a good look at how the system itself is holding together and functioning. So that's the concept behind this.
You know, in looking at that, and reading some of the little notes on the drawing there, some of them we weren't sure, they weren't mapped at all. Is that correct?
What's that?
Some of those weren't mapped at all. They were just, you know where there was
Right.
the beginning, and it went somewhere.
Those are kind of guesses, assuming it's a straight line and, yeah, so.
Yeah, you're, yeah, because you really don't know for sure. You know where it begins, but you're not sure.
Yes.
What path it follows, and you're assuming it ends up at this point, but no one really knows.
And in many cases, you know, these, these lines can dog wig to pick up other areas that we just don't know.
So that would be a good time not only to identify where they actually connect at, but map them and then determine if they can be worked around, or if somewhere down the road, some of those are to the point where they, they need significant replacement, then we can, we have it identified and we can market what we may need to do to bring that up to standards and then.
Exactly.
Put together a plan to rebuild those, especially if they're 100-plus years old now. I'm sure they've served their purpose.
And this is an area that traditionally has flooded in the past, so I mean, there's, there's a whole lot tied into that, so yes.
Commissioners, do you have questions for John?
Is this going to be with PEC or Trans Systems?
PEC is the engineer that is working for Indigo, the park architect. So this is with PEC drafted the RFP. Now, Trans Systems would be involved to the extent that they are actually also working with Indigo on part of the design work as well. So when we met, all four, both the city, Trans Systems, PEC, and Indigo were all involved at the meeting, you know, sharing information.
So it's all going to come under the same primary consultant, Indigo Design?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about coordination.
No.
Between an outside consultant and them. Good. You know, we have had some problems in the recent past with some of the brick storm drains. I think there was one right off of Cottonwood that had collapsed, and then one on Birch Street also, the sides had caved in, and then the top caved away. It was a sidewalk on top. So the investigation is definitely worth the money that we can control a problem instead of react to a problem.
Yes, and, you know, going a little bit further, you know, this will kind of form the basis to understand what flood control in that area looks like for the future.
Most of the flooding on Penn Avenue at the railroad trestle is from backup, isn't it, instead of runoff? Or is, will that be determined?
I, I don't know. And again, this is kind of that first step, and it very well could be that we are getting backflow, even backflow from the vertigris back into that area.
Because sometimes in a heavy downpour, it'll cross the street. This might be something to make sure that it's covered, that the investigation does review the flash flooding that will occur, that if we can increase the size of the line coming out, that we can reduce or eliminate the chance of flooding on Penn Avenue. Because sometimes, doesn't it, David, flood there before it backs up?
Yeah, I mean, Penn Avenue at the underpass often floods under very heavy rain. It just doesn't have the inlet capacity to take it all in, so you get it, you get the initial flash flood drains, and then, then the secondary is as the retention fills, it backflows back through the system. But usually fairly quickly, the retention can clear it out, but yes, you are correct.
So, you know, as we look at the storm drainage, analyze the inlet capacities even along Parkhurst.
Yes.
Just to make sure if we're going to have to replace due to condition, that we increase the size if necessary, that we handle all our issues.
John, are there, are there other areas? I know 20th and Sycamore, that's another issue where that's tile line, brick line, that's under consideration at some point in time to, to improve that bottleneck there? And then I know we're clearing out debris and brush along Whiskey Creek moving.
Yes.
Up toward Laurel and then further up the road. So are there other potential areas that maybe we, we haven't looked at that we need to look at?
Yes, actually downtown is potentially one of those areas. One, it has been reported by more than one citizen in different areas that some of the storm sewer may be inadequate and may be having some backflow in and around the Penn and Main. So, I mean, that's obviously very significant, and if we can, obviously we don't want to rip up Penn or Main, but it, to the extent that we could find something downstream that's causing the bottleneck, that would, yeah, there's, there's, there's more out there.
Okay. So is that something that we'll, in the near future, look at that to identify those problem areas and for the long term to look at some of the solutions to either eliminate a bottleneck or make improvements to those areas?
Absolutely. And that's one of the, again, longer term is probably the best way to put that because it will take some time to develop, because, you know, our sewer and our water, we have great information on, but when it comes to our storm sewer, it's much less information.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Hayes?
Seems like a good idea to me. I'm ready to make the motion.
All right. Let's move forward, make the motion. Commissioner Hayes?
I move to authorize the request for proposal for storm water and infrastructure investigation at Central Park.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Item D, consider authorizing the Independence Housing Authority's purchase of Phase II Pheasant Point addition, approximately 5.91 acres from USD 446. April, how are you this evening? April, how are you this evening?
I'm good. Sorry about that. Um, the Independence Housing Authority has, uh, settled on an agreement with the USD four four six to purchase some acreage for additional housing development. Since the housing authority cannot own our own property, the city has to hold it in the city's name, we're asking for permission to do so.
This is, uh, it's adjacent to the Pheasant Point Apartments, I, I think initially they were looking at building another phase of the apartments on this property?
Yes, Pheasant Point was, and then they sold the property to USD four four six for the potential of a bus barn, and now USD four four six does not need the land, so they have agreed to sell it to the Housing, forty-four Housing Development.
Okay. That is great, it's hard to find, uh, parcels of land of any size in Independence now, to where you can put in a subdivision of homes, so, um, this worked out well in the long run. I know they wanted a bus barn, but this has, uh, a better use of the property by, uh, being able to put homes in that area.
I, I think it's a great location for future development, we're close to the schools, um, we're close to, you know, children be able to get to any school through that location, so, um, yeah.
I thought the price was reasonable too, roughly six acres, two thousand an acre.
Yes, and, you know, the appreciation goes to USD four four six for the understanding of, um, the purpose of what we're wishing to do with it. They were very reasonable in their amount that they asked for. I think they were hoping to be made whole on what their expenses were, and appreciated the city and the housing authorities' efforts in identifying housing needs in the community. So it was a, it's a good partnership.
Yes, yes, I agree. Commissioners, do you have any, uh, remarks or questions for April?
I have no questions.
April, I like the, uh, idea that you have collaborated closely with the city and the, and the school district on this, I think it's a win-win.
I agree.
All right, um, April, thank you very much, with that-
Thank you.
I entertain a motion on this, gentlemen. Excuse me?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the real estate sales agreement for the Independence Housing Authority to purchase approximately five point nine one acres from USD four four six in the amount of twelve thousand dollars.
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Um, item E, consider awarding design contracts to Trans Systems for a design of the sea, of the Sea Clip projects. John again.
Yes, uh, fortunately, we were awarded those, uh, two projects, uh, the project at Penn, uh, from Morningside to the city limits, as well as Chestnut from near Penn Avenue to Ninth Street, so, uh, we're looking at beginning the engineering on that work. Uh, it's probable that we won't be bidding that until, uh, June, July, depending on, on how KDOT has this programmed, so, um, this is the, this is the step to award the engineering. And I, I will note that I do have, uh, the suggested motions, I have, at least on my copy, a typographical error that would've been my, my error, uh, showing that, um, both motions should be for, to approve the award for engineering services.
Oh, okay.
And that's, that's my error, I apologize.
Thank you for pointing that out, John.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for John?
I have none.
I have no questions.
All right, then I enter, uh, I entertain a motion on this.
Motion one, I move to approve awa- award for engineering services for the KDOT Sea Clip pavement restoration program project, Penn Avenue, from Morningside Drive to North City Limits to Trans Systems for the amount of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Motion two, I have, I move to approve the award for engineering services of KDOT Sea Clip ser- uh, surface pres- preservation program for Chestnut Avenue from near Penn Avenue to Ninth Street to Trans Systems for the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, moving along, item F, consider selecting a representative from the commission to participate on the zoo master plan steering committee.
And this is something I, I think we talked about previously when you selected the consultant, but we need, uh, a commissioner representative, and then we would also request that you set a special commission meeting for November thirtieth at five-thirty, that the full commission can, um, weigh in on the, uh, plan.
Scott, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
PGAV Architects, which is the firm that the city has contracted to develop the master plan for Ralph Mitchell Zoo, has requested that the city of Independence form a steering committee, which will be responsible for making decisions regarding the plan's development. The steering committee currently includes five members of the city leadership team, one representative of Four Paws, one representative of Park Board. We request that one member of the commission volunteer to serve on the steering committee.
All right, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, with, with that, um, I would like to volunteer for that.
I would second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, thank you, gentlemen. And then we need to set up, um, a special meeting for November the thirtieth at five-thirty, um, in regards to the zoo master plan-
Yes.
-steering committee.
Yes.
So do I, uh, that's the motion I'm gonna make, do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. Item six, reports, um, treasurer's quarterly financial statement for a quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty, twenty-one, uh, and then we also have a sales tax report. Uh, gentlemen, do you have questions for Lacy on the quarterly financial statement? And/or the sales tax report for October twenty, twenty-one?
The treasurer's statement, um, you have a couple, well, there's three line items that are shown in deficit, the KPWSLF project line ten, um, what project is that?
That is, that is the water treatment plant project.
Uh, WTP?
Yes, that's Design Services is, is what we are, um, we have not requested a disbursement from that loan.
So you're waiting for reimbursement?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the next one is on, um, the street capital projects reserve, um, that is pending, um, a transfer from the mostly special use sales tax of, um, of cash balance of street allocations, um, you'll see in our next meeting, uh, we have scheduled to bring to you all the proposed amended budget, taking that, um, cash balance of street, the street quarter percent from special use sales tax to move it to the specific project reserve fund, so that it's easier to see what dollars are, are there for streets. So, um, we've, just instead of recording it in the sales tax, um, fund, we've recorded it here so that it's more apparent, um, what, what the dollars are being spent for. Um, and that transfer, I think, is scheduled for eight hundred and twenty-five or seventy-five thousand dollars, so it'll more than cover the current deficit, it's just a timing difference.
And the, uh, Fund twenty-three-
That is-
Same thing?
Um, yes, that's a, a loan that we have not, um, requested a distribution from, and I can look up which loan, I'm not sure if it's the water line or the sewer line, but it is one of those. My report's not working for me on here, but it's, it's the loan C, C twenty, twenty forty-three, so that would be the southeast lift station loan, so that's Design Services for, for that loan.
Okay, and anyone that, that notices the deficit shouldn't be alarmed, because I, I believe in our audit, didn't the auditor go through that it, it, in statute, it allows for a deficit, w- as long as the funds are being, going to be transferred-
Yes.
-from a, a grant program or-
Yes, from a loan or a grant program or something like that, um, in terms of the, the street one, that, that has a deficit, we are getting reimbursed for, for street projects, um, but it's, it's actually currently just a timing difference of when it hit our accounting system. Uh, if we were to pull up this report today, it's, it's not in a deficit because of that transfer.
So it's, it's just sequencing of the report and the transfers. On the downtown tree replacement, uh, Fund forty-three, it does show we have a balance of fifteen thousand, three hundred, thirty-four dollars.
Correct.
There's some open tree grates.
On West Main?
Well, on, uh, let's see, it's Myrtle and Sixth Street by Equity Bank. I noticed, uh, during the walla, going down the street and with a hole in those, there, it's a hazard for pedestrians, so if we have money to put trees in or put something, we need to go ahead. I understand on West Main, you don't wanna-
Well, I, I know that there are, I think, two on West Main that are also empty, um, so those are potential ones as well.
Yeah, we need to do something about the hole, but if we have funds available for trees during planting season, we need to go ahead.
That's, that's a really good point, because if we are aware of this type of a trip hazard, uh, we probably should take some kind of, you know, intermediate action to, to either put a caution marker there or something like that, so people don't inadvertently step in it.
Instead of the orange cone, if some plywood or some metal plugs could be made that could be dropped in, it'd be more, we had the yellow cones for quite a while-
Yeah.
-and it's like-
We'll get it covered.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I just, I thought we had expended all the, the funds for trees, and when I saw that, I thought, well, maybe we're missing the schedule or what, that's why I wanted to bring it up.
We also use that fund for maintenance of, of the trees.
Yeah. On the, the second page, our, our total debt, uh, is the eight million, nine hundred, fifty-four thousand, six hundred, one dollars from our bonds and our loan programs and our leases?
Yes, so our total from bonds are, is about four point eight million, and then we've got the leases, and then our loan programs are, uh, just over three point four million, totaling eight point nine million.
Yeah, so we've, uh, decreased our, our debt quite a bit in the last few years, so-
Yes.
'Cause it's, um, I forget what the, the ratio is by statute we're, we're under, but we're, we've made significant strides in that.
Yes, and if, if you look on our website, we have, um, an annual report that we prepare every year that kind of takes a deeper look into our debt analysis, and it actually shows which, which debt is excluded from the debt calculation and things like that, and it's, it's on the finance page.
Okay, that's the only question I had on the quarterly treasurer's report.
Commissioner Hayes, do you have questions?
I'm good.
You're good? Uh, I just have one question, um... How are we notified of, of, of a tree that's no longer living? Is that the, the, the business owner that the tree's located in, or do we do an inventory and say, hey, we've got five trees that, they didn't make it, they didn't make it out of the winter, you know, they're dead, so?
Mayor, the park is down there on a bi-weekly basis-
Okay.
-assessing them, and Scott keeps track of them, and Lacy and- We also have TLC that helps us with downtown, so we got eyes, and then, you know, Lacy keeps her ear to the ground too, so-
Okay.
-we try to monitor closely and stay on top of keeping the downtown clean.
Okay, all right, great. Um, gentlemen, were there any questions for Lacy on the sales tax report?
Uh, I, I did have a question on, our sales tax receipts are, are going up, which with inflation, as prices go up, our sales tax goes up, so some of that is probably associated with the increased cost, I think I saw one report this morning, uh, inflation in October was maybe six point two percent, but as, as we see in our household, our expenses going up, and how is that affecting our, our budget? Things that we're buying, are we're being affected the same way in some areas of, of increased costs for, uh, uh, maintenance, uh, piping, fittings, and general things? Are, are we prepared or?
I don't know if I'm, this is exactly the question, but I, so, I can't tell you, like, for a certain category or, or type of, of commodity that we buy, if we are seeing what percentage of price increases year to year, I haven't done that in depth of an analysis, um, but in terms of the budget, I, I think I mentioned this at the budget, during the budget process, that, um, one of the ways that I'm, I'm actually really proud of, of city staff for, for accomplishing this is, we have found efficiencies in our, in our buying power, um, and in our processes to, to absorb a lot of those increases, so that, that, that is truly how the, the mill has stayed constant for six years, um, because, like you said, we are also subject to inflation, um, and we have just been fortunate enough to find efficiencies in our processes, and, and what we have to buy and when we have to buy it to absorb that and not, um, push that burden back onto the budget. Does that answer your question?
It, it does, 'cause that was brought up by the public, you know, they're, they're saying we need to cut, and just knowing what we're going through at home, the city has the same thing, as prices go up, as gas goes up, it affects our budget, and how can we provide the same service at the same dollar, when a dollar doesn't buy what it used to bought in, in quantity, and, and looking that, what were you doing to manage our city funds, and you've already s- been implementing plans, and, uh, as, as we close out the year and start budgeting for, and on, two thousand, twenty-three, that's gonna be really difficult, but, no, that was, well, 'cause, you know, you, if you look at the increase of sales tax money, and if everything was still at the same price it was in January, that would really be giving us a, a cushion that we could look at our revenue, reducing the funds required to balance out the budget from other sources, ad verum property tax. So as, it's a, it's a balancing act, and that's, that was the question I had, make sure that we're on track, that we're not having to take drastic measures to cut programs or to cut expenses to handle inflation, but you have been monitoring the situation?
Yes, we're, we are on track budget-wise.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Hayes?
Uh, once again, good news, and, uh, I'm glad to see the results. Thank you.
Lacy, and then we have the final assessed valuation.
Yes.
And I just, let me look at it here, I see we estimated assessed evaluation was forty-seven... Yeah, forty-
David, can you move the slide?
Yeah, forty-seven thousand... Am I reading that right?
Forty-seven million.
Forty-seven million, I didn't think that sounded right when I looked at it and said it. Forty-seven million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-two. And the final assessed valuation is forty-seven million, five hundred and ninety-three, five fifty-five.
Yes, so our assessed val- our final assessed valuation, um, went down sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars from the estimated valuation, um, which is what we use to prepare our budget. Um, so the, the effect on that is a, we, we use that estimated number. Um, so it's, it's your mill rate times valuation equals levy dollars for our budget. Um, so being that we prepare the budget, um, using an estimated number, um, when, when that number comes in as the final number, it changes the, the other variables in the equation. So, um, at, at budget, our estimated, I'll call it, um, rate using that number is fifty-five point two four nine, which yields a levy of two million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and, um, excuse me, two thousand, two million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars is what we built our budget on, that levy amount. Um, the actual rate, now that the actual valuation has come out, is, um, six, fifty-four point six two nine and that yields the exact same levied dollars that we built our budget on. Um, and to, to just further explain that, um, so I said that the, the difference between the estimated valuation and the final valuation is that sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Right.
Um, if you translate that into a mill, so the, the difference in the value of a mill, it is, uh, sixty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. And so when you multiply that by the total mill difference, the, the change in mills from what we had at proposed budget versus the actual, it's a point zero seven nine mill change. Um, so you multiply that out into dollars and it's, it's five dollars and forty-two cents. So it's, it's virtually no change.
And that's basically what we attempted to do is keep our levy rate the same as we did the previous year. And with the revenue neutral rate, well, I understand if we had not adopted that resolution to increase, then we would have had to stay at the fifty-four point five five mill.
Yes.
And that, by doing that, then we would have to cut funds out of the budget somewhere to balance...
Yes.
The budget. So basically, that little minute increase of five dollars, we had to approve increasing the revenue neutral rate so that we could levy the same rate in funds.
Correct, the, the revenue neutral rate is an estimated rate. It's what they think you will need to levy as a rate to get the same dollar levy. Um, now we're using the, we're still at the revenue neutral rate, it's just the actual revenue neutral rate instead of the estimated rate. And had we not passed the revenue neutral rate, this year it's fine, cause it's, you know, it's five dollars. It wouldn't have been a, a major impact, um, but it's not uncommon for those valuations to be drastically different and we would not have had any protection from dras- those drastic changes that could have come up from estimated to final valuation. That is the, the purpose of still approving the revenue neutral rate, yes.
Because at the time we're working on the budget with that estimate, like you said, we don't know up, down, little or a lot.
Yes.
And, and basically though, what we responded to the citizens' concerns that we kept the money that we were collecting through ad verum tax at the same. Now, if their property tax goes up, that's because of their valuation of their property, which is beyond our control.
Correct.
Thank you, Lacy.
All right, um, moving along, um, gentlemen, we've all had a chance to review the city board minutes for the electrical, board, housing authority and rec commission. Item E, there's a reminder of a November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one special commission meeting at, uh, ten AM. And that is, that's the, that's a Wednesday, right? I, I don't keep track of dates anymore hardly.
Yeah, because the regular commission meeting's on the eighteenth and that's a Thursday.
Okay.
And that's with the, uh, Realtor, um, regarding building D.
D, okay.
Well, what will be the format of the actual meeting? Uh, question asking or anything like that?
It's basically an interview and you're interviewing them. So, I mean, if you would like to send me some questions, I could put them together for you or whatever you would like.
Is, is, uh, the, the meeting going to be chaired by the mayor or are you going to be conducting?
No, the mayor would run the meeting.
Okay.
It's basically just a dialogue with this, um, real estate firm on whether, you know, any questions you have, if you're comfortable with their process, the questions you wanna ask them. Prior to that meeting, uh, we will give them a tour of the building right before that and then they'll come in and you guys can visit with them.
So if, if we're gonna ask questions, if we could submit them to you, so we'll all be aware of the question and not, and not do a redundant double question on the same topic or had, at least have some consistency that we can, if one commissioner has a question, we can ask in another direction to fill in the whole interview.
And, and speaking with the city attorney, the interview can be done in an executive session regarding trade secrets because, um, whatever methods or whatever that they utilize, it could be, um, you know, not be advantageous for them to have that in an open session. And is that correct, Jeff?
I believe it. I believe if they request it and, and they're concerned about it, yes. It'd have to be for their protection.
Okay.
So, um, cause I do have, uh, had a couple of questions at least floating around in my head and, yeah, I would like to submit to you and I encourage the fellow commissioners to do the same and then the redundant, then you can narrow them down to a list of questions and then we'll, wherever that takes us, we'll, we'll follow off with it, follow along with it, so I think that's a good idea to do. Okay?
Okay, um, you might also copy David, cause I actually won't be here that week and that way he could put those together.
Okay.
Go ahead and copy me so I know what's going on, but if he could send them also to Da- copy to David, he can put that together.
Okay, perfect, well, you can do that. Okay, um, item seven, city manager comments, Kelly?
I don't have anything, Mayor.
All right, thank you, thank you. Item eight, commissioner comments, Commissioner Hayes, do you have any comments for tonight?
I have none.
Commissioner Koflis?
Yeah, I have a, a couple. I know last year we had a, a, a session on, uh, security and commission meetings and I think it would be good to have a refresher, but also expand, uh, the training from, I think primarily it was active shooter, but looking at, at some other possibilities of conflict with a, a citizen during a commission meeting, look at a policy so that all three commissioners and the staff and the city attorney sitting up here, there, there's some plan ahead of time on how to respond and how to handle that that should be included into the, um, security training. And Jerry?
Jerry.
I just wanna make sure he's clear what you want so that we don't have any misunderstandings.
Sure. I'd mention probably a, a refresher on the Alice training and then also expanding the training to other situations.
So this, uh, I discussed this with you briefly the other day. I, I have an email prepared, well, mostly prepared, that I haven't sent to you yet to kinda update you on this topic, but, uh, some of the specific thoughts that came to my mind are, we, we talked in general when we trained, when Sergeant Stafford trained us, we trained in general. Um, but it turns out, we've learned recently that we probably need to have a specific plan for other types of scenarios and so that's kinda the, the discussion that I was gonna inform you about, so, um, anyways. Like, I could go into some detail there, but probably shouldn't due to, um, you know, security measures and Open Records Act, uh, exceptions with that. But yes, I do have a plan that we're mocking up right now based off of those discussions that I've had.
Okay.
I know there's policies in place and you're trying to do, you're trying to do what's right when a citizen comes up here and has issues and has a complaint. And I understand that and I know there's times I've given them a lot of leeway, so I take responsibility maybe being a little bit too lenient in that way. Um, but I give them the benefit of doubt when they come forward, that they're, they may be very passionate about the issue that they're trying, trying to explain to you, but I also give them the, the benefit that they're dealing in good faith and that this is somewhat controllable. Uh, the situation, uh, here a while back was something that, um, was really hard to deal with. So it, it made me rethink about, uh, whoever's sitting here in this spot, you know, how they would handle something like that. You know, in, in the meetings, when you, when you have responses, uh, you know, the, the, the crowd is supposed to be non-participating, you know, they're not be hollering and clapping and, and all this when they're up, when someone's up there giving a presentation, whether it's against taxes being raised or whatever, and I get that. Um, but I'm also trying to give them the benefit of a doubt to where they have, uh, uh, the, the right to be heard, but I want it to be in a responsible way, uh, and one that recognizes that, um, that we're here, that we're here to help. You know, we're, we're not your enemy, we're here to help you, uh, but as we give you the benefit and we give you that courtesy, we expect that courtesy back, so maybe that's something that, that I need to do on the explaining when they do come up. At least, uh, enforce that point, so, but I'm curious to see your email on, as far as your proposal.
Yeah, so what, um, what I'll propose is, or what I'll recommend to the city manager is that we schedule another, a, a recurring, uh, regular, I would say annually is a good plan, security meeting and we just meet and, um, we can go over commission meeting policies. Because, you know, the police officer's role in a commission meeting is different than out on the street. And, um, you know, I'm not gonna go into that tonight, but it's, it's very different and that's because we need to be sensitive to people's, um, right to free speech and an opportunity to address their elected representatives. And so i- in recognition of those kinda things, um, I think we just need to have a meeting every year where we all just formally discuss, uh, things like commission meeting policies and what is expected by the commission from the person serving in my role and then some specific, uh, action plans. And then we can repeat the training that we went through as well on an annual basis. I, I think that'd have great value for all of us.
I feel that the situations that we've had have been handled appropriately. I, I, I think the, allowing the citizen to speak is, is important. What, I was concerned that everybody up here knows and works together to support the mayor or at what point that something gets to the situation where it needs to be addressed, that everybody is prepared and they know how to handle from that, that point forward. So, you know, I don't think there's anything to fault for what's happened. I think there's probably been two or three occasions that we've, we've had things happen and it, it's worked. But I, I think that if we're, we're looking at being adequately prepared and extending the sphere of protection for more than just the commission, then it's something that needs to be directed and, and particularly, you know, as, uh, as chief, you're, that's your business. You need to be telling us how we can respond, how we should and have some form of control, not just winging it. So I, I think the, the only way to be prepared for an event is to practice. And the only way to practice is everybody know the, the rules and how it's gonna, gonna go down. And I think as we see things changing in our world, we need to be proactive, not reactionary. And this is an opportunity for us to take that to the next level, to be better prepared cause as we're prepared and control the situation, we protect the citizens.
Yep.
And so that was my only suggestion that we look at scheduling an event that, you know, we can go back over to, to be better prepared.
How soon would you want to schedule that?
Well, I think that's up to the, the chief to get his ideas together. Well, you know, he's got more things to do than just address his issues, so I think he has to be com- comfortable to the point to make the presentation. So I, I would turn it to you, Kelly, to work with, with the chief and, and work it out before it comes to an actual, uh, session for training. I don't, you know, sometimes if you, if we set a timeline, then it forces that you're not adequately prepared and we just waste time, so I think that's up to, to you two to work out what you see and get comfortable with it, then come to the commission to set up a special, uh, special meeting to go through it.
And it, these things are just evolving, you know, over the last year, we've really, uh, as, for these meetings, we've, I think it's been about the last year, I can't remember now, but seems like it's been a relatively short timeframe that we have really, um, taken these things into consideration and started putting those plans into, into place to prepare the facility and all that kinda thing, so this is just another step in making things better.
Does this training also go out to other, other boards that are established? The only one I can think of would be like planning and zoning, you know, because they're, you know, they're, they're uses, but you could have someone that would be combative and maybe wouldn't agree with what was going on at the meeting. You know, we see it at school board meetings, uh, all over the country now. Safe, a school board meeting, it used to be a safe meeting to go to. Um, it's not necessarily the case anymore, so maybe that's something we might wanna consider, especially on those that the issues might be contentious or there might be hard feelings or disagreement on because they, they can't see that, why you didn't, you know, allow this to go forward. It's a thought, cause we don't, don't wanna escalate a situation, but at what point do you draw resources in? Before you, you tap it or you catch it before it ignites, I guess that's the, the key.
Well, we're here to serve as directed, so, uh, we're happy to fill that role for anybody that, any group that we are directed to do that with. We do it for church groups, uh, employers, uh, uh, school system. This, you know, it's, it's a program that we, we provide as part of our community outreach. So yes, we're happy to deliver that wherever it is needed.
And I think when you, if you try and do one me- And I think when you, if you try and do one meeting with both, multiple boards, you kind of lose some effectiveness because, you know, what I'm concerned about is if I'm sitting here, that I know what's going on, that I can vacate, you know, hey, you better outrun me. I'm not going to look back to help you, you know? It's one of those things that we have to know how we're going to respond and where we're going to go and what we're going to do. And you lose some of that effectiveness if you try and do multiple groups in, in one format that, you know, we trained where our commission was meeting in, in the veterans room. It's totally different here. So there's new scenarios that have to be considered that you can't, planning and zoning, if they meet there, they need that training specific and you can't do all of it at once and, you know, I think we could offer to extend if they're interested, but, you know, I, I think we should be focusing on protecting the commission and the staff that's sitting up here in a vulnerable situation now first. That was my only comment.
All right, I've made my comments concerning that also, so that's my comments. So we don't have any public concerns tonight. Nothing was brought up.
Lacy, did you receive any public concerns?
No.
Okay, then at that point, we're moving to item ten, adjournment. I make a motion that we adjourn and do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you.